You guys ready? All right. Call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Present.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
All right. Mr. Chaffin, will you please read our closed session items for this evening?
Thank you. We have items A through, I believe, G. Item A is liability claim. Claimant is Justin Roastear. Claim number 2526. Agency claimed against is against City of Yuba City. Item B is liability claim. The claimant is Jordan McClellan. Claim number 2527. The agency claimed against is City of Yuba City. Item C is liability claim. Claimant is Robert Ades. Claim number 2528. The agency claimed against is City of Yuba City. Item D is liability claim. Claimant Benjamin Garcia. Claim number 2529. Agency claimed against is City of Yuba City. Item E is liability claim. Claimant Arun Kathasing. Claim 2530. Agency claimed against is City of Yuba City. Item F is conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation deciding whether to initiate litigation pursuant to government, because section 549569D4. Number of cases: one case. Item G is threats to public services facilities pursuant to government, because section 95, excuse me, 54957A. Consultation with city attorney and/or city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. There's so many people here. Is there any comments from this massive crowd? Hearing not even a roar of silence. All right. We will move to closed session. Okay. We're going to call this meeting to order tonight. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting have been distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Great. If you will stand, tonight's invocation will be led by the worship pastor for Adventure Church, Jeff Papenga, and then the pledge will be led by Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for the blessings that you've given to us in this land and particularly our region here. We do ask, God, for things that you have 100% of and we're always in need of. We need your patience, your insight. We need your wisdom. You are already ahead of this. You've already seen today. We ask that it be undeniable, the wisdom that you would give us over the agenda tonight and for things to come. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can be seated. Mr. Chaffin, would you report out of our closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have reportable items from closed session. Items A, B, C, D, and E are directed for a notice of rejection, with item EC being as to items that are nonjurisdictional on the basis of that. We also have a notice of insufficiency to report out on Agenda Item E. And with regards to Agenda Item F, staff is authorized to seek restraining order against Mr. Stephen Strusick and any additional related action. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Agenda modifications, just so everyone knows, item four tonight is going to have to be delayed due to the federal government shutdown, but once they are fully back open, look forward to having Ninth IS in and their command staff to give us a presentation. So we will move on now. Is there any other agenda modifications? Okay. Very good. Okay. All right. So let's go to ceremonial presentations. And the first one we have tonight is for Faith Christian School, their 50th anniversary. And we have several people here tonight. We should have Mr. Bill Hannel. There you go. Derek Morrison. There we go. And school board members, Matt Davis, Amy, is it Briscoe? Gotcha. Amy Smith and Doreen Mayer. There we go. Oh, we are on. You know, it's, this is the neat stuff that we get to do as a council, and it's recognize organizations, people, businesses, and even schools in our community that you guys are the backbone with everything you do here in our community. So, and we're already blessed a little bit earlier this year because the girls' basketball team won their title, and you got all of them back next year, so we honored them. And it was right up on the heels of 50 years. 50 years that Faith Christian School has been in our community. And it's one thing for our public schools to be around for 50, 75, 100, but for a private school, that's something special. So thanks for choosing Yuba City as your home, first of all, because as I'm going to read here in a minute, it always wasn't Yuba City. You moved across the river. But with that, would any other council members like to say anything? We're good? All right.
I would.
Oh, wow. And your name is?
Brent Smith.
Brent Smith. Oh, that's a testament right there. So, awesome. And you're 29 today, is that it? All right. Well, we want to honor Faith Christian School for 50 years of excellence. And whereas in 1975, Faith Christian School was founded by parents from the First United Methodist Church of Yuba City, who desired a Christ-centered, community, Christian school that would serve both counties. And with the help of retired Yuba City Unified School Superintendent Clarence Summy? Yeah, there we go. The school opened its doors at the First Christian Church in Marysville. See, I told you, you weren't always here. So, but Faith Christian grew steadily, adding a grade level each year. And in 1978, junior high grades were added at Calvary Temple Church. And over the next couple of years, four new classrooms were added for the first high school classes for Faith Christian. Faith Christian School experienced renewed strategic vision, multiple successful capital campaigns, full-term accreditations, expansions of campuses, upgraded technology, and the acquisition of additional land for future growth. Though the, through the faithful giving of individuals and unwavering commitment, Faith Christian School has navigated seasons of growth and challenges, yet always returns to its core mission, which is to reinforce the Christian training of the home and church. Today, Faith Christian School joyfully marks 50 years of academic excellence. Go ahead. And spiritual formation, celebrating a legacy that continues to influence generations for Christ. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate Faith Christian School on your 50th anniversary. And we honor the teachers, staff, administrators, board members, parents, students, and supporters, past and present, and students, past and present, right there, whose dedication and obedience to God's call have built and sustained this school and the ministry it stands for. Likewise, here's a certificate from us as well. That's the proclamation I just read, and then there's a certificate for you guys. Would you like to say a few words?
I'm sure. We are blessed. Good to see Brent here as well. 50 years. Had no idea. Started with 34 students and with a vision to provide an alternative for the community. And again, as you mentioned, through the years, a lot of people that have given, supported, and invested in the youth of our community. And so blessed to be really in Yuba's center counties and in the Yuba City particularly. And thank you again for recognizing this. It's been a great, great opportunity.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. Would you like to come up and join us? So we will start with their fearless leader, Mr. Doug Libby. Yes? There is a, there is a quiz after this as well. And can you bring up your code enforcement team and introduce them? Glad you guys could make it tonight. These guys right here, before I even begin to go into what these guys do, let's just go ahead and give them a round of applause, because these guys have a tough job, and they do a heck of a good job. So, you know, this is Code Enforcement Officers Week, so we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize you both. As one of the five, I just want to say thank you. You guys have a tough job, and you guys go out and dang your pull off the impossible. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the council. And I want to open it up because I know everybody feels pretty strong about the job.
So code enforcement, for those that don't know, they do everything from helping to clean up the homeless problem to taking care of weeds in yards and illegally parked vehicles. So there, these folks, Aaron and Boone, are both individuals that are front-facing, which means that they're dealing with the stuff head-on. Our carts or food carts, et cetera. Thank you, guys, because I know it's a thankless job most of the time. And, you know, sometimes we get a little anxious as council people because we get the complaints, but you know what? You guys always seem to come through and take care of them. So for me, anyway, I appreciate it and appreciate both of you and the work that you do.
Just to piggyback on that, thank you very much. You gentlemen do have a very difficult job, and your community appreciates that and it notices that. In addition to that, both of you stepped into some big shoes recently because we had a couple of folks retire, and I know that you're more than up to the challenge. So thank you for doing that. And it is a little bit like whack-a-mole, but you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for your service.
You took my word, whack-a-mole. But talk about a department that really deserves appreciation and doesn't get it enough. It's definitely code enforcement. And I was fortunate enough to get to go ride along with both of them actually a couple of months ago. And I can attest to the fact they both very much care about the job and take it very seriously, even though we had a lot of fun. I had fun. I don't know if you did. But I learned a lot. And you do have a really tough job. And so just having some insight into that as a council person or citizen means a lot. And so thank you both so much.
I had the privilege of riding along with these two young men. And the thing that came off for me with them was they weren't just necessarily enforcing codes, they were educating people as well. We had a crowd around us that I thought that was going to get a little belligerent, but after these two got control of it and started educating the group, it was like hugs and kisses, and everybody was going to go with this, a win-win situation. So thank you, gentlemen, for doing your job very professionally. We even got to pull somebody over because we were in hot pursuit. It was quite the ride for the evening. But yeah, keep up the good work, and we're going to make this thing happen. So thank you.
Well, let's go ahead and present this to you, both of you guys. Code Enforcement Week is the second week of October 2025. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens in our community through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws, and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environment, you've already heard us talk about those tonight. They have challenging and demanding jobs and often do not receive the recognition for the work they do in improving our quality of life for our residents and businesses. In recent years, their roles have expanded with jurisdictions relying on their expertise and training and dealing with the growing challenges of the unhoused and transient population. Code enforcement officers are dedicated to the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration and preserving property values. They often have a highly visible role in the communities and regularly interact with the community and the business owners. The City of Yuba City wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community. So therefore, now be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the second week of October to be known as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, and call upon its residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by those who serve our code as our code enforcement officers. So thank you, guys. Let's give them a round of applause. Would either of you like to say a few words?
My name is Boone. I'm just, I guess I'll just say, one thing that keeps me coming back is the variety within the job. Every day is totally different. We get to work with a lot of different departments throughout the city, the police, building, fire, essentially every department. And every day is different, so we have great leadership, staff, council. We certainly appreciate the support, and I really enjoy working here.
My name's Austin. I'm fairly new to code enforcement, but just to say something really quick, kind of like Boone was saying, like one of the biggest surprises with this job is the variety. We deal with so much, a lot more than I initially knew. But it keeps the job fresh, it keeps it exciting, which keeps me, you know, wanting to do my job best that I can. And really, the team, everyone we work with in Yuba is just honestly, they're just great people and makes the place a real joy to work.
Mr. Libby, I'm giving you the honor of saying the final words to your team here.
You know, like others, I just like to say thank you, because it is a thankless job. And these two, it's a pleasure to come to work with them each day. We're lucky to have them, and I will do everything I can to keep them with the city as long as I possibly can.
I think that means lunch this week, guys. Thanks again, guys. Appreciate everything you guys do.
All right. One more fun thing. You guys get to come up twice. So could we have the Smith family come on up?
We've got a tray of nuts and a tray of no nuts.
Either one works, because we're all nuts. Oh, thank you, guys.
Well, we are here tonight to honor you guys. We've started something new that's the We Are Yuba City Legacy Award. And, you know, with that, it is about celebrating local businesses that have stood the test of time and the taste of time, from what I know about what's in those trays.
Waste of time.
And, oh, such a waste of time.
No, no, I meant waste.
I'm feeling exercise coming on after this one. Serving as pillars of our community through the dedication, integrity, and heart that you guys have. This award recognizes those who impact, whose impact extends beyond their storefront businesses that define the spirit of Yuba City through your commitment to excellence and community service. It is only fitting that the very first Legacy of Service Award is presented to the Cookie You know, the Cookie Tree is a Yuba City original, and for more than 44 sweet, delicious, waste-growing years, as you said, you have been a, just a cornerstone to the local community, the flair, the finesse that we have. I know we've probably all come across it, but you guys are known worldwide. And they'll be like, I've talked to multiple people that's, I got to go through Yuba City. Matter of fact, I had clients the other day that came into town, and it's like, what are we doing on the way home? We're stopping a cookie tree. That's their ritual. So you guys are having an impact. So, the Cookie Tree has been a cornerstone of Yuba City's community pride since opening its doors December 11, 1981. What began as a small cookie shop on Pluma Street has grown into a beloved hometown bakery, employing more than 20 dedicated team members who continue to serve the community with warmth and tradition. Beyond their famous cookies, brownies, cheesecakes, and all the calories, the Cookie Tree has baked generosity right into your own recipe for success. For decades, you've given back through countless donations, school partnerships, and local fundraisers, including the signature Benefit Night program that helps community organization raise funds for important causes. Your philosophy is simple, yet profound, to give back to the very community that has helped you thrive. Through an wavering dedication and a genuine commitment to Yuba City, the Cookie Tree stands as a true hometown treasure, one that continues to serve, uplift, and absolutely sweeten our community. And so, behalf of the entire city council, our residents, we would like to recognize you tonight and thank you as you are our very first Legacy Award winner.
Well, sure. All of you, this belongs to you too. We've been here for a long time, and we hope to be here for a long time to come. And we hope to see all of you and bless all of you. And you want to say anything?
I would just repeat what was said, that, you know, yeah, I've grown up in the tree and through all the years of even being in school, leaving school after practice, going over, working part-time. In fact, this is the only job I ever got fired from. My own mother actually fired me. And then I learned a lesson from that, and she hired me back. So I've grown up there, and then I keep returning there as I've gone off to college and gone on to a career in education. And, you know, the torch is being ready to be passed, and I'm starting to step up and take responsibilities. But to echo, I think what has given us our successes is what mom has always said. She always says, I want to bless everybody else the way that I've been blessed and the way that the community blesses the store and the business. And that's the way, you know, that's the integrity with which she's conducted business and which she's approached everything. You know, it's not about what's going to make the most money, it's about what's right and what's right for the community. And that's what she's always been her philosophy. And I think that's why we've continued to be a success, is that God has continued to bless us because of that. And so, yeah, we hope for another 44 years. There are some things that are in the works right now. We're going through some growing pains, some things in the works to maybe see some new possible things happening with the Cookie Tree. So keep your eyes open, and again, we appreciate this. Thank you very much.
I would like to say thank you. I can't tell you how many meetings that I've gone through that I've been able to endure because there's Cookie Tree cookies out there, whether it's a fire department, a Valley Truck and Tractor, it doesn't matter. You know, those moments, okay, can we get this done so I can get those cookies? But anyway, congratulations on being here for so long. You know, you are a true, true treasure for this city. And like you've said, I hope we continue here, or you continue here for another 44 or how many, because you are one of our staple businesses, and you are so much valued. Thank you.
Well, what do I say? Thank you for everything you've done, you do for our community. Thank you.
I feel like I can say a lot, because speaking of travel, I've done educational programs with Millie and you, so we have a little bit of a connection here. But I will say the same, as a 4H and FFA kid, we would come there every single year and more just to get those gifts for our buyers. And I know I've had everything on the menu as a person with a sweet tooth, so you're doing a great job. But speaking of integrity, I'll just tell a quick story. I was there a couple of years ago with one of those generic $50 gift cards from Visa, and I think I used that to pay, but left it there. And I got it a couple of days later. So whoever kept it behind the counter for me, it's just, it's a testament to that honesty, because anybody could have taken that card and used it. But great job. I hope you all stay around for a long time.
I go back quite a ways with this young man. 1990, was it 1991? He comes rolling into my neighborhood, new family. Did you have any of the kids then, or were they, you were all in the oven?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, new, new. Okay, is this one of them? Oh, good grief. Do you remember me at all down the street? Yeah? There you go. Yes. We got a new couple. And I always used to like, because my neighborhood is really old, all the old people, and all of a sudden we had kids in a few years, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. I love prolific people. And we do ride motorcycles together. I think we painted one together, didn't we? Yeah. But no, great family, very ethical, always looking out for the community, always, always. I can't ever, I can't stress that enough. They always look out for this community. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for having such good kids.
Thank you. It was my pleasure.
All right.
Well, thank you so much again. Never stop making cookies, guys. Never.
Right. Mayor Shaw, I was wondering if you can issue some type of executive order to Councilmember Kirchner to share? Because he very quickly put all those dishes.
Oh.
Yeah. So through some type of mayoral executive order, he needs to share.
As everyone seems to be leaving, I hate to say it, but I really think they're leaving too early. Mr. Chaffin, you just have to go with this, because I'm about to break. Mr. Chaffin, you just have to go with this because I'm about to break every Brown Act rule there is because this was not agendicized. I make a motion that we put these cookies out there for the enjoyment of everybody that's here tonight. Do I have a second? And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Cookies are being served right out there. Chief, where's the chief? We need the chief. We have a cookie thief. All right, guys. We give him just a minute and I think we're good. Let's go ahead and go on to Agenda Item 5, which is the Active Transportation Plan. And we're going to have a presentation by Fear and Pierce, thank you. And so, Mr. Wolf, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a quick introduction. So in 2024, the city received an award from the Caltrans Sustainable Community Grant, which would allow us to develop an active transportation grant. What that is, is basically being able to take a look at our city holistically, seeing what pedestrian networks we have in terms of sidewalks, what bike networks we have, where we have issues, where we have gaps, and where we have inconsistencies with what the current standards are and what the best practices are for connecting, providing alternative modes of travel for our pedestrians and our residents. So through that process, we issued a request for proposals and at the top of the rankings was Fear and Pierce. They have a very broad background or a very in-depth background in transportation and planning. In fact, they've done work in our traffic circulation model. They've previously developed a local roadway safety plan for us that helps us come up with countermeasures for safety in terms of traffic calming. And this plan will ultimately provide us with some projects that will help us apply for future grants and get us future improvements. So without any, anything else, I'll hand it off to David Moore and Adrian Engel with Fear and Pierce.
Mayor Shawn, councilmembers, thank you for having me. I do feel at a slight disadvantage not having brought any baked goods, but there's a waste next time when we get to adoption. Josh, you could have given, if you'd just done a next step slide, that was pretty much my presentation. So my name is David Moore. I'm a transportation planner with Fear and Pierce. Great job on the pronunciation, that's hard for a lot of folks when they first see it. I'm the project manager for this plan. So I did just want to start with a brief introduction, I'll make it even briefer thanks to Josh's, on what the Active Transportation Plan is. So really, it's looking at human-powered travel, but that extends really to kind of human-scale transportation. So if we consider things like e-scooters, e-bikes, things of that nature, it's not strictly human-powered. But that includes also mobility devices, things of that nature, wheelchairs. This is a citywide, it's really a guiding document. So this planning effort is fairly high-level. This is not going to produce any kind of engineering studies or corridor studies that you would need for the actual implementation. This is really just to give the city a plan for their vision of how to incorporate active transportation within the safety and growth goals of the city. So infrastructure policies and programs are really the three kind of tangible recommendation buckets, if you would, that will come out of this plan. And so that's what we'll be kind of chatting through and presenting for you at the next presentation. And really, having an updated Active Transportation Plan is a requirement on behalf of the Caltrans Planning Grant. So really, this is allowing for the city and for planning staff to go after that grant funding to actually turn this from a plan into actual on-the-ground improvements. So I'll skip the first one, right? This is paid for through the Caltrans Planning Grant. I do want to just back up. So in 2011, the city actually adopted, not necessarily the ATP, but the Bicycle Master Plan. So it didn't have the pedestrian component, which was kind of standard practice back then. They were generally two documents and now current practices to move them into one. And I want to just pause to commend city staff, city leadership on what they've been able to do with that 2011 plan. Over 20 miles of bikeway improvements have already been made. That includes Sutter Bikeway Extension, Class II facilities along Clark, as well as levy improvements. So they've really been able to take that 2011 plan and do a lot with it to improve active transportation within the city. 2011 was a while ago, and since then, you all have done a lot of work in developing new plans that includes things like your ADA Transition Plan, Safe Routes to School, Local Road Safety Action Plans, like Josh was mentioning, as well as land use plans, some annexations, and not least of all, your update to the general plan earlier this year. So we want to essentially take the active transportation components of each of those plans and provide those as a through line within this document that kind of unifies all those from the active transportation lens. And then finally, from a best practices and approaches standpoint, in 2011, Class II bike lanes, the kind of painted stripe on the side of the road that I think most people commonly associate with a bike lane, that was really the majority of what was getting implemented regardless of roadway width or speed. And really, what we now know is that those were not keeping existing users safe and they certainly weren't inviting new users who would be open to bicycling out of fear of their own personal safety. And so we've adopted new types of bike facilities that include those buffered bike lanes that I mentioned on Clark, which uses roadway markings to establish spatial separation from vehicles, as well as what we call Class IV separated bikeways, which provide that extralateral space but also vertical elements, whether that be bollards or concrete or planters or parking lanes. So we want to make sure that this current plan really just takes the existing streetway network and uses or incorporates those modern practices. We kicked this project off with city staff in May, and I will be back before you, may or may not have baked goods, but I will do my best in February to give you a much more comprehensive presentation on the recommendations that we arrived at and how we got to those recommendations. Pending any additional feedback or recommendations you might have for changes to that plan, it might come back the next month or two for final adoption, but you'll expect to see me again around February to kind of go over what we came up with. The project schedule is really looking at three phases and given the kind of condensed timeline, we are currently transitioning out of Phase 1 and have started planning for Phase 2. So we took the existing conditions within the city, looking at the roadway networks, bike ped facilities, sidewalks, things of that nature, starting to just compile where those are, what condition they're in. And then did a really robust, and I want to extend an appreciation for Civic Thread, I'll talk about community engagement in the next slide, but really did a robust element of community engagement to understand from Yuba City residents what they would like to see from this plan, what issues they're having, and what goals they particularly want to have come out of this. Next, we're going to develop the actual network of bikeways, pedestrian sidewalks, and intersections, and then we'll develop a project prioritization list that will develop essentially give the city an overall trajectory for how to implement this, but that'll also produce 10 priority projects that will allow, once this plan is adopted, the city staff to immediately go after grant funding for implementation. And then finally, you'll have a final draft of that plan to approve again in February or March. So like I said, Civic Thread, who we have as our subconsultants for community engagement, they also worked on your Safe Routes to School Plan. They've done an amazing job of really intentionally engaging with key groups of Yuba City and the broader community as a whole. So we have those existing conditions. We met with city staff from across various departments, county staff, to make sure that they're all included and we're understanding their needs and challenges that they're facing. We have an online map that's currently going on that allows anybody in the city or outside the city, if they, you know, visit, to interact with and provide their recommendations and take a short survey. And then we've also done a number of in-person engagement events throughout that phase, again, to really understand what are the values, problems, and challenges facing residents that they would like to see solved by this. And so in conclusion, next steps, we'll finalize some of the planned goals that we've been working with city staff and community to develop. We'll have the draft recommended network and prioritization finalized. We'll get feedback on that draft network. We're not just going to produce that and then assume everyone wants it. We want to know what the city wants. And then we'll have that prepared draft plan for you all in February. And that concludes the presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I have a quick one. Thank you for the presentation. It sounds like some really good stuff. Just want to follow up on safe routes to schools. I know that that specific program may or may not still be in existence, but where we have taken over or annexed land, we have some schools that are probably not serviced or not as safe as they should be. You all will be including that in this.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So all the annexed areas are included in the current planning effort. And through that prioritization process that we're currently developing and working with the city, schools have kind of several different categories in which they're kind of included in various metrics. So those will certainly be included.
When you get into those areas, I call them areas on the edge, where some of it's city and some of it's county, do you incorporate things that the county could take a look at? Because you could do half the job, right? And not get the other, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. So we do take into account the county's, whatever their existing plans are for incorporating that. And then we want to make sure that there's continuity, so we don't want a really good city facility to just drop away at the county line.
Right.
We'll work with the county to see what's feasible. And then if the city wants to adopt something stronger, potentially the county could then later include planning efforts for their jurisdiction as well. But we don't want to leave city staff beholden to something that is out of their jurisdiction. But through close coordination, that'll be had.
Great, just what I wanted to hear. Thanks.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Hearing none, thank you for your presentation tonight. We're looking forward to seeing you in February. And Josh has the phone number and the address for the Cookie Tree.
Excellent. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Public Communication, Item 6, Appearance of Interested Citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment and any other, on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on tonight's agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting tonight will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We did not have any notices turned in, so do we have anyone from the public that'd like to speak? If you do, go to the podium, please state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes. No, no, right back here at the back.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Hello, my name is Ray Lamelli, and I purchased some property on 299 Second Street, Garden Highway. It's on the corner where Garden Highway and Second Street meet. I purchased it about three years ago at a reasonable price. And last few months, I've been trying to get the water turned on. There is water there, there is water on the property. It does have a meter and they're digital. And I've been calling the Water District and I had a gentleman go out there and turn the water on the 22nd of, which is last Monday, or two Mondays ago. And it worked. And because I repaired all the leaks in the plumbing system that was there prior to the prior owner, it was turned on. So what I did on the 29th, which is Monday, I came in to here, to the Water District to have it turned on, and I filled out all the information. Now, I, at 10 o'clock, and at that time, I was there, no one showed up, so I called the Water District and they had mentioned to me that, has any, no one contacted me about why, what reason for the water not being turned on. So I came here to have my name removed, doing the water, and I believe I ran into Mr. Kelly and of course, we didn't come along, you know, friendly at the time because I took time off work and I've been doing it for about three a month or so, getting everything ready. And there was no explanation, no phone call or anything, why I was not able to have water there. The water, it has water, I have electricity, I bought the barn, there's a barn on there and there's trees there that I have, olive trees, pomegranate trees. I'm a farmer, rancher, we, I grew up on Butte House Road, we had a ranch nursery. And Michael Pasquale, I think he knows the Lamelli family out there. Anyway, I want to fix that property, there's a barn there, and I want to convert it into a living quarters. Now, my main concern is the grass gets yellow and it gets tall. And I'm a member of the Knights Landing Water Board District, Ray Lamelli, and we have lots out there. I bought some property out there and I'm able to have water there. I have, I do plant a few grapes and I do have some plums and things like that. Then I have a 40-yard shipping range there, which I enjoy, which I grow grass, better to keep it green. But my thing is, is I think that it would be an asset for that part of town, for me to take care of it and get water. I'd like to grow grass and I get, I bring home five gallon buckets from my house to water the trees. I'm not going to live there. I talked to my agency, my insurance lady, and she has said, I had a, the Corps of Engineers built a brand-new fence along the fence line there. And they did a really nice job and it keeps the loafers out from jumping, the homeless people from jumping the fence. And I want to fix the front of that fence up to where I can keep the homeless people from going there. I've been really good about keeping it clean. And at the time, I have a video of the dogs, there were three pit bulls where they were tearing the fence down and they were going to attack me. I cannot do any work due to that reason. I want to build on the south side, I want to replace the fencing line. I work at Home Depot, I want to replace the fencing line, I want to take some trees down. And I hired a tree company, but I can't get them to go out there and do it a month and a half ago, two months ago because of a fire hazard.
If I can interrupt you, your three minutes are up, so if you can wrap up in 10 or 15 seconds here, your final thoughts.
I just want to, would like to turn the water on and just clean up that area and clean up the property. And it's an investment, I think it would be a good asset for Yuba City and especially on that part of town.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments under Public Comments tonight? Okay, thank you. I just encourage you to continue to work with staff because that's nothing that we can hear or make any decisions on, just continue to work with staff. So does anybody else have any other comments tonight? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to move right on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. So tonight, we have Consent Calendar Items 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Do I have any public comment on Consent Calendar Items 7 through 12? Any public comment, Consent Calendar? Hearing none, I'll pull it back to the council for action or comments.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Take motion to approve Items 7 through 12 on the Consent Calendar?
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries, Consent Calendar is approved. Moving to our business items, which is one item tonight for community sponsorships. Ms. Wakefield, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here this evening to present on behalf of Christie, who is unable to attend. She has three community sponsorship requests that she wants to bring to your attention. The first is from Yuba City High School Baseball Boosters. They are working to raise funds for a bleacher upgrade and they have a variety of different events, fundraising events planned, and they are requesting a contribution of up to $1,000 to help them reach their fundraising goal. We do have a representative from Yuba City High School Baseball here, Coach Maury, if you do have more questions about this specific sponsorship. But I'll go ahead and go through all three requests and then we can, we can get into the details if you'd like to. The second request is for our annual Trees and Traditions event. This event, as you know, happens at the Sutter County Community Memorial Museum. This funds, this fundraiser funds year-round programming and exhibits at the museum, and they are also requesting a $1,000 sponsorship. With that sponsorship, we would receive four tickets to the event. The next request that we have comes from YSEDC and Sutter County. They've partnered together to host what's the inaugural Bounty of Sutter County event, which basically is a business appreciation dinner. And that will take place on October 24th at Butte Star Ranch. They also have requested $1,000 in sponsorship. So as you know, we have two accounts that we have earmarked money for, community events and contributions. The first account has $9,000 remaining if we grant the Yuba City High School Baseball request. The other account, community events, if both requests... The other account, community events, if both requests tonight are approved, would have $5,500 remaining of the $10,000 annual balance. So with that, fiscal impact is pretty straightforward. Everybody's asking for $1,000, baseball up to $1,000, and the other two, $1,000 even. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and when you're ready, I can go ahead and read through the recommendations, so you don't have to do that.
All right, thank you, Ciara. Any questions from the council, vice mayor?
Yeah, I understood what the ask was for baseball and for Trees and Traditions, but it wasn't for the county. What is it that they're specifically intending to use the funds for?
So they're putting on this business appreciation dinner, basically to acknowledge businesses in the Sutter County area for various different categories, so agriculture, I believe innovation, a few different other categories. I can go back and pull that up.
I do believe they're charging admission for that, though, so I was trying to figure out, I mean, I'm not, I think the event is great, I'm just trying to figure out, what are they going to use $1,000 bucks for us to do?
If I may add, the only reason I know is because Supervisor Baines came knocking on my door of my business. And what you get for $1,000 is basically a table at the luncheon, and I believe it's a table of eight, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bindorf. And there we go. And they've put out a call for people to make nominations, and I think they have four awards they're going to give out, and so.
Familiar with that, I was just trying to figure out what, I was familiar with what the event is, but we've made a common theme here, is tell us what we're buying, I guess.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, so in my conversation with Sutter County, it's very similar to the event that they've done in Uba County, and the sponsorships just help offset the cost of the event. It's really what it is, as they're honoring businesses, all, in all of Sutter County, it could be in Uba City, the incorporated area, et cetera. It's just a sponsorship for the event to offset the costs.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
We do receive the table of eight seats.
Yes, sir.
It says Uba Sutter, is Uba involved in this, or is it just Sutter County? Because I know YSEDC, Uba Sutter Economic Development Corporation now has included the chamber underneath their wing. Is this a joint, Uba and Sutter soiree?
Yeah, so when we started the event in Uba County back in, I believe, 2009, 2010, the EDC was the partner in helping us put it on. So they are a, I guess you can call it co-host, but it's really put on by Sutter County. EDC coordinated the entire event for us, and I, and from what I know, they're doing the same thing for Sutter County.
Oh, okay, all right. So it is exclusively Sutter County business, as such? Okay, all right. Because I was going to say, if there's Uba County as well, are they divvying up as well? No, okay. Well, I just want to make sure. Second question is to the coach. Coach, are you planning on using the $1,000 to, for purchasing of capital assets? Or are you planning to use it to generate money for your?
Just a second, please. There you go.
Green, all right. We have, we have a separate account for the bleachers. Last year, I go back and I still watch the championship, the state championship that we had, and whenever I'm not doing anything, which is about, you know, every evening. And I look at the parents and everybody that was there, and the one upgrade that our field needs is a beautiful grandstand that wraps around. We have portable bleachers everywhere, and the one thing I'd like to give the community, they came, well, we had over 300 people at that game, and there were people standing, there was lounge chairs, you know, beach chairs there, and we had people in wheelchairs off to the side, which, they were up against the fence, but I think we need to upgrade to go to a ADA compliant, nice set of bleachers like we have on the football field and a lot of our other opponents. That's your question, Mr. Mayor, we want it, we have a dog-eared account for that, so the $1,000 would go into that account, so that we could accumulate more funds as we go through. We're in our infancy, I mean, we just won, I'm trying to strike while the iron's hot, and get community interest to come out, and hopefully we could do it again, and we can use them as soon as possible.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Coach, great job. Yeah, last year, last season, great job. And there's a ton of work, there's a ton of work, it's never been done before. Congratulations, continue the good work.
We're doing it, there's a game going on right now, I just left it come, my coach, we're going to do good again this year.
Great job, Coach, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council thus far? Any comments from the public? Any comments concerning these from the public? Everybody's on a sugar high from those cookies, I tell you. All right, I bring it back to the council for action or further comments and discussion.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve, all three is presented. Okay?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Wakefield.
Thank you.
All right.
And Tony's telling, selling tickets already, right? Yeah, okay. Starting tomorrow.
I think he just sold a whole bunch right there, so. All right, is there anything that the council wants to bring up to the attention that we want brought back at a future meeting that we already don't know about?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I do have one item that's coming up the last couple of days. I've had several inquiries about the roundabout that is going in or is at currently, Sanborn and McCune. I've got some neighbors that are really concerned about what that's doing. And so I guess my ask is kind of an update on where we're at, but even a brief, how did we get here would be nice as well. I would expect, based on the conversations I've had with the neighbors, that more than likely, they would be at that meeting. And so if I could ask staff to put something together, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bindorf, can we get kind of a historical and status of that? All right. Anything else from the council? All right, let's go to reports. Mr. Bindorf, you have the floor.
Pass, nothing to report.
Okay, all right, coming to the council, let's start with council member, oh, let's mix it up, Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of brief, there was a food bank meeting, no reportable action, although something that we may be looking at, I mentioned to a couple of board members a few years ago, as I was passing through Reno, there was a really neat food drive that between the different municipalities put together in front of a Walmart. And so what you had is you had fire trucks, police vehicles from the county, fishing game, you name it, they were all out there for one purpose, and that was to generate food for those that are needing. We have a food bank that a lot of different entities in town rely on. And so I brought this up to a couple of the board members a couple of years ago, and it was brought up at the last meeting, that there's some interest in that moving forward. So we're going to maybe possibly take a look at that, maybe after the first of the year. With transit, not a lot reportable action. We looked at authorized executive director, assignment agreement with Sutter Community Affordable Housing to accept 8.5 million in grant funding for the next-gen transit facility awarded. Also, they have a 50th anniversary event coming up, which would be Saturday, October 18th, at 6:30 at their facility over in Marysville. I believe that's open to the public. Lastly, starting tomorrow, the mayor, council member Cole and I plan on going to the League of Cities, which this year is in, we have it Long Beach. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring back things that are relevant and usable for our city. It's always a good chance to network with folks, share ideas, and bring back interesting ideas of what can be done or what shouldn't be done. And I'm looking forward to that, and spending times with a couple of folks that I work with up here, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pasquale.
That is a change. Thank you, mayor. Meetings, attended the DBA meeting last week. They were just, not a whole lot going on, they were mostly concerned about their October 4th car show that was going, thank you, sir, car show that was going on, but they are, they are getting ramped up for the Christmas stroll and all of that, so they're all on point and focus. Air quality control management, they're in the middle of the openers for labor negotiations that is going on. The director, Mr. Brown, seems to think that it should go fairly smoothly, not a lot of outrageous openers at this point. So that's what's going on, air quality control, as well as there is a blue sky of monies that are available. And what piqued my interest, Josh, is the fact that you can put in charging stations. And I believe there was somewhere between, there was two pots of money, 900 and some thousand, and the other was 700 and some thousand, and I think the application for that are due by a week or so, I believe, something like that. Just for your radar in the future, there is money for that. I think possibly charging stations at that Bridge Street slice of property we have, we're trying to do something with, possibly could be an area, okay? Really enjoyed going to the workshop, our strategic plan, our city manager pushed the envelope. I really, really appreciate that, Robert. You're thinking, you're thinking above and beyond of just normal functions of the city, and I really appreciate that, that we have a vision possibly going forward in the next 10, 15, 20 years. Attended the mayor's cup, the football game, Uba City RV, Uba City prevailed, had a really good time on the field with the mayor and the superintendent of schools. We had, we had a very nice time, sitting in and discussing a few things about the city and the school and the such, but good time had by all, and a lot of enthusiasm. Uba Sutter Arts Council, my meeting with them, they're planning their big fundraiser for November 1st, if anybody is interested. I believe it's a clam bake or oyster feed, something along those lines, but they do have chicken if you want it, so. Put a plug in for them. Pink October run on October 4th, I was traffic control. It's interesting when you're out there in the middle of the street and people are zipping by you in an automobile, but very well attended, a lot of people, knew a lot of people that ran by me, I kept telling them they had 20 more miles to run, and they giggled at me. But good event, the Give a Key family, and I believe, Mark, you were feeding people. There we go, all right. For that, I'll conclude my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cole.
Okay, I don't have too much to report, just a meeting at the Sutter County Children's and Family Commission a couple of weeks ago. There's so much good stuff going on over there, I can go on and on, but I would encourage people to follow their social media, just with all the different events they have with the museums, diaper bank, baby showers, a lot of parenting-type classes, breeding classes, really great things they're doing over there. And then I'll just echo what Mike said, our planning, our goal-setting workshop was awesome, and I'm looking forward to the next few days of the conference, too. That's all.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. It was a busy first couple, couple of weeks, actually, toured, through SACOG, toured Wheatland and Beal Air Force Base. If you haven't been down to Wheatland, they're doing a lot of good stuff down there. And for those that don't know, of course, this is pumpkin patch time, and it was kind of interesting to note, 400,000 visitors a year, and a lot of traffic in Wheatland. But they've got a collaboration for some growth down there with the water treatment plant, you probably know about that, Robert, a long time coming. The SACOG meeting after that was a bit brief, a lot of time was spent at Wheatland, and we also toured Beal Air Force Base. There was an event that the mayor and I attended at Beal later in the, not that day, but another day, honoring the prisoners of war. Very good presentation, and a couple of local folks, Obie Wickersham and Mike Connor, we actually got to sit down and have some lunch with Mike Connor, who was a POW, so, and Obie was down, Obie's 102, and if you know Obie, he's still kicking, doing really well. The priority setting or goal-setting workshop, yeah, Robert, you did a great job facilitating, I think it opened our eyes, and, you know, we figured out we weren't in the box anymore, we weren't allowed to be. So we had to be outside the box looking at new stuff, so I think that was all good. And I enjoyed the table I was sitting at and the interaction of all the department heads, along with the council. The mayor and I met with leadership of the temple, I'll leave that for him to talk about. Had the SACOG Transportation Committee, and really, the news coming out of the SACOG Transportation Committee is that the federal round of funding is coming up with applications in spring, and I appreciate the feedback or the interaction that I've had with Public Works in regards, and the city manager in regards to making sure we get our foot in the door. This is going to be a very competitive round, a fair amount of money out there, but I know that Public Works is well thought of by SACOG, and put together good competitive grants, and I'm sure they will. Following day, we had the SACOG Board Retreat, and this was in Elk Grove. If you haven't been in Elk Grove, they were very, very, they're doing very well, they got a lot of things going on, and they, they kept bragging about they had the best streets in the region. And there was a reason for that, is that, you know, they had, not only do they have a development agreement that puts money away for repair of the roads within those developments, but lo and behold, guess what, they also passed a revenue measure. And so, you know, sometimes you pay, you pay a little and you get a lot, and that's a pretty good example of that, amongst other things they do. Other than that, I would say that the one thing I would tell you is I believe ballots are hitting mailboxes, and regardless of what you vote or whatever, just remember to vote, it's our opportunity. I'll leave you with this, this was something that came up at the SAC Board Retreat, and I am going to, I found it highly interesting and probably a byproduct of COVID, but in SAC County, only about 38, this was from SAC County, only about 38% of the third graders read at level, the rest do not. You know, and as we talk about things about economic development and quality of life and such, I think we've got this bubble, and Tony, you may know this better because you're our resident educator, but you've got this bubble, I think, going on right now. We really need to make sure that, whether it's catching up or what have you, but I'd like to think that hopefully the reason for this is mostly COVID-related stuff, but I do intend to talk to Uba City Unified and just kind of see where they're at, if they have that statistic. I think it would be interesting, because to me, you've heard it all before, reading is fundamental, you know, we have to have folks that can read, you can't learn if you can't read. So anyway, that's all my thoughts for tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. I thought I was going to get away with just going, yep, they've covered it all, and we're good to go, and the softball over to me. You've already heard most of the stuff, we were at mayor's cup, the ceremony out there, we've been to a lot of the same things, we had a few ribbon cuttings, Beaver Heating and Air, Century 21 celebrated, their 45th, thank you, I knew it was 40-something, I couldn't remember, but it was, so, been a lot of outreach into the community there. Couple of things that hasn't been mentioned, I said on the RWMA, the focus right now, the RWMA has been, are we going to, you know, keep the current structure we have, where we're outsourcing the executive position, and right now, that seems to be the direction we're going, and for at least the next year or so. And then our ad hoc, like the vice mayor said, we did meet with the temple leadership. You know, hopefully, we will get a very good update in two weeks, because that will be two weeks prior to the actual Seek Parade or Seek Festival, as we, I've started calling it, because as the vice mayor said, it's not a parade anymore, it's a three-day minimum event. And, you know, we just keep encouraging, and we asked of the temple leadership to please get in contact with the city, we've been doing everything we can, get the contract signed, get everybody in. Get the contract signed, get everybody in place because we want a great event. But more than a great event, we all want a safe event. And we've all seen how crazy this world is. And we've got a lot of logistical things going on because Transit Authority cannot provide the bus service anymore. We told them that a year ago. We saw that coming. We're waiting on a signed contract from buses and we're still waiting on the traffic and security contracts to come in. And so I would just like to reiterate and encourage temple leadership to get those contracts done so that all of the safety personnel can get everything in place and be there to protect our citizens and our guests that come in for that weekend. And let's have a great event by all means, but let's have a safe event. So, yes, sir.
Only when you're done.
Go for it.
I, I would like to extend the regrets of Lieutenant Colonel Foglia for not being here tonight. They are not allowed to come off the base and participate in things. But one thing I would mention is this, we have a lot of, of airmen that now are out on Beal that, and out off Beal as well, that aren't getting paychecks. And so if things like the food bank start knocking on your door or other means to support those folks, who knows how long this, this stoppage or whatever it's called, this goes on. But there are people that are going, you know, that are living literally paycheck to paycheck that are tasked with, you know, saving our country, not saving it, but protecting our country. And those folks are our neighbors. And, you know, if there's something, I know I've reached out, I'm sure you have as well, reached out to the base, say, hey, look, if there's something that we can do, please let us know. Because there's going to be a, a point in time, if it hasn't happened already, where there are folks that are looking for just simple stuff, you know, especially those young airmen and women. So anyway, thank you.
I'll piggyback right off that. I had that conversation four or five hours ago with Seven Swiss. You know, right now, the, the need is okay, but we do need to be aware of it. And we'll just throw this out there because actually I got the email, being a veteran, because I am affiliated with USAA. Most of the military is, USAA has already sent out an email to where they do interest-free loans. Well, basically for the military advance their, their payroll until the government reopens. The one caveat this time is they have to contact USAA and ask them to initiate that. So there's a little part there. But, but to Mark's point, you know, the men and women in uniform, got to make sure we take care of them. So, you know, it might be a good time, not saying you have to, but if you see them here in town enjoying lunch, it might be the day that you just very anonymously buy their lunch and, and just let them know that they are, they are really cherished, you know, something like that. If anything comes in, that's really what a large part of the honorary commander program is, is keeping those lines of communication open. And as you've had your discussions, I had my discussions, we'll bring back to the city or our local businesses, anything that's brought up that's, that's needed. So on that, anything else from anybody else on the dais up here? All good? All right, well, with that, we will go ahead and we will adjourn.